Okay, we're recording.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the May 19th, 2020 special meeting of the Methacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay, by way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Given the need to conduct this school board meeting in a virtual environment, the Board of Directors required members of the public wanting to make comments on agenda items or at courtesy of the floor to pre-register by 5:00 today. By way of attendance, let's confirm, we have all board members with a roll call vote. Ms. Kankrow?
Here.
Ms. Drummond?
Here.
Oh.
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Navarrett?
Here.
Ms. Purdue?
Here.
Ms. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Winters?
Here.
And myself. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn to Dr. Zerby.
Thank you. This evening, we have the, if the board recalls, tonight is actually one of two meetings. The first being a special meeting whereby it's been advertised that the board will be presented with the 2021 proposed final budget for consideration whereby, if adopted this evening, there'll be one more opportunity before June 30th to look at that budget and to potentially make changes to it if the board so desires. But this evening, we have Mr. Bricker, Director of Business Services, with us, who will be taking over the screen to share with you your presentation that was shared in the Finance Committee this past month whereby the administration is making a number of recommendations to reduce the overall budget. And we would ask that, including in this presentation, are additional cuts that are likely to provide relief at the same time they are required to take other actions prior to being included into budget presentation. So with that said, Mr. Bricker will take over the screen, share the presentation, we'll open the floor for discussion, and certainly move on with the special meeting here this evening. And just as a quick note before we proceed with the budget presentation, there may be a number of other people that are on the call this evening and certainly to be recognized later in which is considered the work session, which will immediately follow this meeting. So with that said, Mr. Bricker, if you want to take over the control of the screen and start the presentation. Good evening. Tonight, I'm presenting the 2021 proposed final budget, and we'll start with the revenue. So as you can see from this slide, 67.7% of our budget is generated through local real estate taxes. This is the portion of revenue that is changed based on the millage increase approved by the school board and changes in assessments. See, revenue is our next largest contributing source of revenue, which is driven by subsidies, retirement, reimbursements, and social security reimbursements. These two areas total 12.95% and 6.13%, as you can see on the chart, which combines for 19.08%. The next one, our third largest area, is the Act 511 taxes, which is 7.45% of our budget. For the purpose of the final budget, local real estate tax revenue is $76,191,256.4. This is based on a millage increase of 2.6334% and April's assessed values. We also used the collection rate of 95.64%, which is similar to the 2008, 2009 actual collection rate. This was chosen due to the economic situation for this time period and assuming this year will be similar. Other key information on this slide, I want to point out, is the COVID-19 impact on revenue. You'll note that we reduced an anticipated EIT income by 10%. We lowered interest rates due to the current market conditions, which are closer to 0.1% versus the 2.3%, 2% that we were getting before. And we also lowered the transportation subsidies. As I said before, the state revenue has our basic subsidies. These increased by $352, almost $353,000. Special education subsidy increased by $51,000, and the Ready to Learn Grant increased by just under $3,000. The next slide shows the calculation of the local real estate taxes. We start with assessed values of $2.6 billion. Use the full Act One index increase of 2.6% to the millage and 0.0334% of the special education exception, which totals $26,756.41. This amount is then offset by the gaming funds, which increases to $2.1 million this year. We apply by our collection rate of 95.64%, and that's how we come into our gross real estate taxes. As we move into this piece of information, it shows the real estate tax analysis that the homeowners and property owners will expect to see. The slide shows the calculation of local real estate taxes. We start with taking the current millage of 30.3781 mills and will be increasing at the 31.178 mills. Based on the average assessed value of $174,095, which is roughly about a $350,000 valued home, there would be an increase of $139.28 to the taxes currently due. And the chart also shows the changes for $200,000 assessment, 400, all the way up to a million dollar assessment, which is a rough value of $230,000, which would equate to an $800 increase in the taxes. As we move into expenditures, we see that 69.25% of the budget is related to salary and benefits, 21.56% operating expenses, and 9.19% to debt service and transfers. As moving to staffing for this budget, I want to make sure that everyone understands that the staffing includes all active and open positions. We did not add any new positions into the budget this year. So it's the same staffing size that we currently have. However, I want to point out that there's three positions that are included in the staffing count, but their salary and benefits are excluded from the budget numbers. These positions are the Director of Technology, the Supervisor of Curriculum, and the MESA position within the business office. All these positions currently are vacant or will be vacant at the end of the year. Salaries had a net reduction of $109,966.86 from the 2019-2020 budget. All contractual obligations are increased as they are outlined within their collective bargaining agreements, with the exception of Mayo, which has an agreement. Oak musicians, retirees, resignations anticipated to be filled by staff are also factored into this. So staff that has already given its resignation letter, we've already adjusted for the new positions. For example, if it's a new MEA position by a retiree, we'd budget that position at bachelor's plus 15. Step three, while the rest of the positions are budgeted based on their contractual contracts. Benefits changed in 2020-2021 by an increase of $420,537.5. We use the Third Look from the Healthcare Consortium, which shows our medical expenses increasing by 7.9% and our prescription increasing by 7.7%. We're able to keep the dental, vision, and life insurance costs the same, so there's no increase. PISers rate that we use is 34.51% and is applied to budgeted salaries. Social Security, 7.65% is applied to budgeted salaries also. We did lower the unemployment cost to $20,000 based on current experiences, which will save us about another $80,000. Operating expenses overall increased by about $59,000 from last year. Driving this would be the 300 Series, which is the purchased professional services. A portion of that is the REACH program that's being implemented at the high school. Thanks to Dr. Angstad and her work, we were able to get a grant that covers this cost in full, which is an increase to the budget of $221,370. So that is included in the revenue side, which will offset that. Purchased property services decreased by $72,000. Purchased services decreased by $4,800. Supplies decreased by $317,874.90. Predominantly, this decrease is related to the fact that the new curriculum books and software we purchased as soon as the board approved them, so that the expenses would be in this year, that we would be able to lower the budget for next year to help take those costs out for next year. Property that decreased by $122,000, almost $123,000. The debt service transfer includes the two bonds, one being the refunding bond, a Series A 2013, and general obligation bond, Series 2016, as well as the issuance of Series A 2020 to fund various capital projects throughout the school district. I think it's important to point out, as we get through these expenses here, that next year, we will have to overcome some of these changes, just so that the board's aware of that. So the three staffing positions that are not in this year's budget would need to be put in next year's budget, and we will not have the grant offsetting the REACH program next year. This totals about $750,000 that we'll have to make up. Starting at zero next year, we already have to come up with that $750,000 for next year. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that these things were put out this year to help this year's budget with those items. So where does this put us? It puts us with a budget of $112,222,354.26. As I said before, the millage increase is 2.6334%. What we have here is a chart that would give everyone an idea, if we wanted to get down to the Act One, which is 2.6, we'd have to lower our expenses by almost $27,000, two and a half by 106, all the way down. If we tried to get down to zero, we'd have to take $2.1 million out of the budget. Also, you can see the changes from last year. So currently, we're about $360,000 higher than last year's budget. If you also go to the 0%, our operating budget for this year would actually be almost $1.65 million below the current budget. Some items to consider, I know there are being discussions later in the working session today, our salary and benefits related to staffing changes at our COLA, transportation, combining that Bell Time at Skyview and our COLA, that will save about seven to eight bussing routes, and revenue, which is the loss of transportation subsidy, which will be associated with the first student contract. These three items total about $1 million. This would give us a potential budget of $111,195,614.40, which puts us right between the 1.5 and the 1 at a 1.2861. This would mean that this year's budget would be lower. Next year's budget would be lower than this year's budget. So where we are in the timeline, we are here today, May 19th, 2020. We are here to propose the adoption of the proposed final budget and advertise the final adoption date of June 23rd, 2020. And that ends my presentation. Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Are there any questions from members of the board regarding the proposed final budget? Mr. McGinnis?
Tim, I just wanted to emphasize something you just wrapped up there with, so there's no confusion. We have yet to do the salaries and benefits, the transportation, and the revenue reduction to get to that number you're looking at. So there's an order of operations here, right? We have to approve one thing and then approve the next series of events to get to that final number that you're talking about, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of the board?
My last question and statement is, this does not come in with the MEA negotiations or any kind of looking forward with their next year's prep?
So in the budget currently, there is no increase budgeted for MEA? And it should be known that we are currently in contract negotiations with the Mathacton Education Association. Ms. Purdue, I see you have your hand up.
Just a quick question, Tim. You went over the budget for the REACH program for this year, and then you also said to, I guess that will offset some costs for this year, but then in the following year, we expect to see that hit the budget. Is the grant that we received, is it only projected to last us for one school year, based on the REACH program at the high school?
Yes. So the REACH program grant is just for the 2020-2021 school year. After that, the school district would have to pick up the continuing cost. I'm not sure if they would amount to the same amount of money, but just using that as a rule, that's where we'd be looking, around $220,000. I'm sure it could be lower, based on what actually is necessary, because I'm sure there's setup fees associated with that. But for right now, that's the number I know we have, and I do not know what the ongoing cost would be.
And that's what I was wondering about, if we've looked at or if we've assessed what the ongoing cost will be, just because I expect it will be higher this year, because we're starting a program, but I also expect that we probably wouldn't spend close to this amount that we have this year, and just wondering if we've looked at what that cost will be for next year.
Yeah, I'll get that information for the board.
Okay.
Well, I can answer that. So generally speaking, the cost that we have allocated based on the grant was the cost for running the program in year one. There are not a lot of, and very little setup fees. In fact, anything that needs to be set up in terms of space or otherwise is also included within our budget outside of that grant item. In the contract with Springfield Psychological has already built into it automatic increases. And Dr. Ang said, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you recall what those annual increases percentage-wise are?
Yeah, it's 2.5%.
So I just want to make sure that everybody understood that it's going to be the cost that we shared with you, plus 2.5%. Are there other questions on matters of the budget? And while there may be, I just want to, again, reemphasize the fact that this is called the proposed final budget, which means that there is one other scheduled meeting on the board's calendar for June whereby the board will be presented what's considered the final budget for the 2021 school year. And at that point, as Mr. Bricker outlined in the presentation, it is our goal, plus based on the conversation at the Finance Committee meeting, to obviously try our best, given the outcome of other decisions that the board has to make, to potentially meet that mark or something close to it. So that is part of the conversation that we had in Finance Committee, and I just want the board to know that the administration will continue to work with the Finance Committee to make those necessary changes and get you the information you need to approve a budget for the 2021 school year. Other questions on the matter for you this evening? Mr. Navarrett?
Yeah, just kind of to echo Drew's point a little bit, and I won't speak for everybody else, but I think in the current environment, obviously 2.6 is not good enough. Certainly, if we can get down to 1.3, that gets us closer to where we want to be, but I do think we need to push harder, and I think we need to understand what the next steps are to get us even lower. And we had discussions in finance about personnel, and if, I don't know where things are in Harrisburg today, but if Harrisburg comes back and hits us with a cap at 0%, we need to be prepared as a board to know what cuts we'll have to make in that environment. Personally, I don't think 1.3 is good enough for us. I think we need to go lower. I think we can look at some of those other inefficiencies that we have and see how we can adjust programs accordingly. I know a couple times over the course of the last, or more than a couple times over the course of the last year or more, different members of the board and the Finance Committee have asked for an individual accounting of personnel, positions, salaries, benefits, what's attributed to them by building a position. I think it's important that we get that, not only the context of this budget discussion, but also in analyzing where we've gone wrong with our budgets in the past, seeing as the last couple of years, our surpluses have been driven more by personnel costs than anything else. So I think that's important. I think as we talk about those changes, I think a lot of those probably need to be had in the executive session, but I think it's important that if other members of this board want to have that discussion, I think we need to make it known here, so we have the time in the next, what do we have, four weeks here, before we have to approve a final budget to get that work done.
Are there any other comments? Ms. Drummond?
I just was wondering about the MEA, the salary cost, like the projection for any increases, because what is the normal practice when you're kind of between contracts that you, I don't know, you put something aside to kind of allow for some increase, or you don't, or like then how does that work typically when you're between contracts?
I think that in my seven years here in Methacton, we've done it a number of different ways. And we've either put money in, saying that here's where it is, we put, and as an example now, we haven't budgeted anything for it at this point.
We haven't budgeted it, but we're not ignoring it. So it's virtually impossible, if not impossible, to put a number in there for something that has not been contractually settled. So I don't want anybody to sit here and say, well, my God, they're not even thinking about that. It has been thought about, but you just can't put a random plug number into a budget. So obviously, when that contract gets finalized, we will put that budget number in the budget and we'll work to it. But it is not being ignored. So I don't want anybody to think that we're just sitting here willy-nilly, saying, oh, we'll worry about that later. It's just a number that we don't have right now. So you have to deal sometimes with what you know and not what you think.
Any other comments from members of the board? If not, I'll turn the meeting back over to Madam President. That ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. So at this time, we will take public comment on this board action item. So if there's, I'm looking to see if on my list. I don't know that we had anyone. I'm sorry. We do have public comment on board action items for our special meeting. Looks like we have Dr. Malik. Second, please. Okay, Dr. Malik, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
You're a little quiet.
How about this?
Much better. Yep.
I'd like to ask you a question, if I could. And this is because somebody suggested trying a different approach. Is there any way you would, considering answering questions?
Dr. Malik, you know, we don't typically engage in a back and forth discussion during the public comment section.
Yeah, would you think about considering it?
Sure, I can consider it.
Thank you. You guys are proposing a 2.6% increase in tax and the taxpayers, and you haven't factored in the MEA, no consideration for Arrowhead, no consideration for full-day kindergarten. And at the end of Mr. Bricker's presentation, I heard something about 1.3%. Is that what you're ultimately shooting for, is 1.3%?
1.3% reflected some potential action items on our board meeting next week. Also, some of the items that you mentioned, such as full-day kindergarten, are not in our proposed budget for next year.
Thank you. Is there any reason that you can't use the $3 million surplus to offset the increase in next year's budget? Because the way I calculated, you would be using $1.7 million, and you still have $1.3 million left over. So although you may think things are grim, with a $3 million surplus last year, you could easily get to 0% and have $1.3 million left over. And that brings me to why is anybody worried about Harrisburg capping an increase at 0% when you have a $3 million surplus from last year that you can apply to next year's budget and end up with a 0% and have $1.3 million left over? So here's some ideas that may help you. Because everybody feels that we have some financial issues, you could bag full-day kindergarten and save a million dollars a year right there. You could also delay the building of Arrowhead and save $35 million, which would be $9,018, and I think nine or 18. So your financial problems can be easily corrected by doing some very simple things. So if you would consider doing those things, especially applying the surplus to next year's budget, appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Next, I see we have Ruth Walker. One second. Okay. Apparently, Ms. Walker needs to rejoin as a panelist due to a software issue, so we will circle back. Mr. Earnshaw, you are up next.
I'm sorry, Ms. Arlessanese, but Ms. Walker is in the panelist view right now, as I see her.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Walker.
Thank you. I have no comment. I signed up by accident on this. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Now, Mr. Earnshaw, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, I did. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Just want to level set some one thing about surpluses with the board, and keep in mind, as you're evaluating this budget over tonight as opposed to next month, over the past seven years, the budget surpluses have totaled $10.5 million, averaging a million and a half a year, and even higher numbers the last three completed fiscal years at a total of $6.7 million over the three years, or an average of $2.2 million per year. And the budget for the current year is projecting a surplus of at least $2.8 million, according to Mr. Bricker. But if you look at April year-to-date results, it could be anywhere from $5, $6, possibly up to $8 million. So I think that's important to keep in mind. So questions on the presentation, I hope they get answered before a vote is taken. On page three, Mr. Bricker stated that earned income taxes budgeted at 90% of an expected level. I was wondering what the basis for that was. There's also a base, what is the base for reducing the transportation subsidy due to a lack of bussing? I didn't understand that one. On page four, I don't understand the base we're using, a collection rate going back to 2008, 2009. I think we're at much different financial circumstances these days. On page seven, On page seven, but it says that the budget includes open positions as well. I realize it took out dollars for three open positions, but I'll be curious to know what other open positions are in there and whether the expectation is, is that whether those will be filled and if so, when. Page eight mentions that there's no increase under the EBA contract. I realize the contract's being negotiated, but contrary to what Mr. McGinnis stated, you can include an estimate if you think that contract is going to cost more in the budget and it would be prudent to do so. And a minimum, I think the board should ask, what is the impact of a 1% increase in the MEA contract to enable a sensitivity analysis? I'll be also curious to know on page 11, what is the actual incremental cost relating to the 2020 debt issuance? It goes up to $18 million. And then on page 12, Mr. Bricker makes some comparisons of this year's budget to last year's budget. Really not a relevant comparison, given the expectation of a surplus for the current year. So really should be comparing, Mr. Bricker, the forecast that he put together to the budget as opposed to budget to budget. And then it's just a couple of other questions that I hope could be addressed. And Mr. Navarette raised this, I think it's a very important issue, given the genesis of the surpluses in the past few years, is getting that detailed salary standard by person. I think that's imperative that you should, you should ask for that. I agree with Mr. Mop with Dr. Malik that some consideration should be given to using some of this year's surplus to offset next year's tax increase. I don't understand the administration's reluctance to do so, given the circumstances we're all facing. And then finally, just what is the thinking on the potential staff reduction at the high school? When are those going to be acted on? And if not, why not now? And that is it. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. And now we have John Andrews. Go ahead, Mr. Andrews, you can unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay. Regarding the MEA contract that is in negotiation, I would hope that there'd be some changes in that to save costs. For instance, the high school teachers at a head of department, is there a way to get them to teach a full schedule rather than getting, rather than having one less class to teach? That could be $100,000 savings. Another question is that school code calls for the, giving the public opportunity, opportunity to inspect the budget. And with the buildings closed at the present time in general, how can the public inspect the budget? And for instance, the people who do not have internet access. And with regard to the COVID-19, there's more, more public discussion going on about a second wave for various reasons. And I'm thinking that we need to think about revenue item by revenue item, what might be the COVID-19 impact on that? I think the, one of the slides identified three, three revenue items that might suffer, but it could be three or four others. And overall, I'd like to see cuts to the budget to get a maximum tax increase of no more than 1%. And lastly, is there any information for the public whatsoever relative to progress on the MEA contract negotiations? That's, that's all I have relative to this budget discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. And that is all I have for public comment on board action items. So first, as we have done previously with these virtual meetings, I'd like to have a motion to approve the suspension of Board Policy 006.2 with specific regard to the limitation on the number of school directors participating in a meeting electronically, requirement of having a majority of the board physically present at a meeting location, and holding of votes by roll call.
Andrea will make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Is there a second?
Liz to second.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries 9-0. And now may I have a motion to approve the proposed final budget in the amount of $112,222,354.26, requiring a mileage of 31.1781, and an increase in property tax of 2.6334%. Further, the superintention is directed to A, give public notice of the intent to adopt a final budget at a public meeting of the board on June 23rd, and B, make the budget available for public inspection as required by the school code. And C, submit to PDE certification of use to the Department of Education certifying the proposed final budget has been prepared, presented, and will be made available for public inspection. Can I have a motion?
Jennifer Cancro makes a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Cancro. Is there a second?
If you're going to get a second.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Any comments from the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I think we should just take an opportunity to explain some things through, through this process since there was some valid questions asked by the community. So I'll direct these to Dr. Bricker, or Dr. Bricker. There we go. And Mr. Bricker, congratulations again. So one of the things that I think you mentioned briefly, but the, the nuisance tax, that was about $200,000. Is that correct, Tim?
Yeah, that's not included. That's correct. That's not included in the budget. That was generated roughly about $250,000 worth of income.
So that was a tax eliminated by this board in the fall. You, the earned income tax, the 90%, what was the theory behind that?
So the business directors have been meeting with various analysts throughout the state, trying to determine where the earned income tax will fall. Estimates range between 10 to 20% short. I had Burkeheimer take a look at our current largest employers and get an idea from them as to what the impact is. Out of the largest employers, the 10 largest, only one of them, the 10th, is currently not in full operations as they were not deemed essential. Most other business directors, you know, did similar things to their areas and in talking with the finance committee and with regards to the board, we felt it was best to set a 10% reduction in the EIT.
Okay. That seems the, a reasonable assumption, but based on, on something there. The subsidy aspect is certainly something that is unclear for maybe not so much next year, but the following years. Has there been any discussion among the business manager related to the 20 or 23%? I forgot what the right number was of state, state revenue.
For next year's budget or for?
For, I, for either, either, but most likely the following year will be less than this year.
Right. So the, the budget numbers we got are from the Penns, or that are included in this are from the state of Pennsylvania through PDE. There is concern with the following year subsidies, did it allow for revenue that the state has had in its income taxes? And what they'll be able to supply. No one has any idea where that's going to fall and no one's ventured to guess at this point.
Okay. The other assumption that I know that the, the collection rate is the reduction from 96.7 or whatever it was to 95, you said was based on the 2008, 2009 collection rates.
That's correct.
So in some ways, that's a aggressive collection rate, considering the unemployment compared to is potentially twice as high.
So, yes, potentially, it could, it could be aggressive, saying that it's more than we actually will get. So we have to take into account the current unemployment, what the ability is of the homeowners to make the payments on any taxes. Some of them may have no problems, some of them may. It also includes corporations. We also factor into that. Rate also assumes certain changes in assessments, but that has been a three-year average that we've used over the time period. And we've been pretty close with those, given the current downturn in the economy. We felt the 2008, 2009 tax collection rate is the most applicable that we have information on.
Yeah. So one of the things you had mentioned before in the finances that I, I think you believe that the collection rate next year, because many people accrue for their property tax through their mortgage payment, that the collection rate should not be dramatically different than previous the last few years. But the following year is a consideration as, depending on the long-term effects of people's economic situation.
Yes, that's, it's my opinion that we'll have a harder time on the real estate tax collections the following year than this year due to the fact that a lot of the taxpayers have mortgages and would escrow their payments. So it'd be the following year when the unemployment impacts those mortgage payments that I'd be more concerned with at this point in time. Seeing a lower number than that.
I know that we have some discrepancy related to the, to what the final surplus. We appreciate you providing a forecast. I do not, I believe it would be more than $3 million. I have complete confidence it will not be $8 million. But the, can you, at a high level, explain what the big ticket items are associated with? If we did not have the coronavirus, what your estimation of the surplus would have been this year?
So assuming we were able to hire the positions as anticipated, run all the events, the buses and everything, we were looking at about a $900,000 surplus at that time. Obviously, the big ticket left for us to pay will be the lump sum payments and the salaries that are actually paid over the summer that are accrued back to this year. So that'll be a significant piece and that's why it comes into $3 million currently. Where we're saving is on supplies, trips, transportation, food services, and other items such as that.
Unfortunately, we have to, the students missed out on many of those activities. You, you did mention something about open positions, but my understanding for the most part, we see Mr. Jones here, and there's very few open positions, I believe, that are, were unfilled at the time of the March 13th, March 12th. The, the three that you highlighted are the full-time director of technology, supervisory, secondary education, and I think it was the accounting specialist. Is there any additional open positions that potentially will not be fulfilled next year?
I could compile a list and share it with the board, but I do not have a full list of the open positions at this time.
Okay. So maybe Shay, you can pop in on that one. One of the things that, that was mentioned by Ralph and has been mentioned many times, I do believe the bottoms-up approach that you take related to the salaries and steps and columns and which, which school they're in there, it would be, it would be much more palatable to understand because I, I believe the numbers are correct from what I can see. But it would be nice to have a schedule prior to the mid-June meeting, that there's a little bit of understanding of that. So if there's some type of schedule that can be created around the headcount, it would be greatly appreciated. We also talked about efficiencies that can be gained. So I'm going to throw something out to Dr. Zerby. I would like to see and some type of evaluation if there are some positions that could be reduced from full-time to part-time positions. I believe that part of the problem that we have in our district with efficiencies is necessarily trying to be, to keep our curriculum as strong and as broad and providing as many opportunities to students as possible, but we don't necessarily have the population of, of participation in all those to require a full FTE. So I would like to see Dr. Zerby come back with some potential reductions from full-time to partial. I don't know if that's doable, but it's something we really need to move forward towards because it, it, we have to be fiscally smart and try to stiff-arm as much as we can the changes that we prefer not to make around curriculum and class size. The point I would make on, on the Peasers is that the Peasers amount, we have no idea what it's going to be a year, a year from now. We know what it's going to be next year, but a year from now, when we're doing this budget, it's very possible it could be impacting our budget up to $2 million in one fiscal year. It could be less, but the reality is unless there's a pension reform for state employees, it's going to be significantly higher than the sort of leveling law we've seen the last four or five years. So I think, I appreciate your time, Tim. I just think that it's helpful for all to just sort of review some of the assumptions so that the community knows what they are. I will be supporting this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. I had a couple of things. Dr. Zerby, one of the questions that was raised was how the budget will be available for inspection by the public. I'd imagine that there's going to be some sort of mechanism as we have, for example, with textbook adoption. Will people be able to make an appointment to, to come to inspect the budget in person?
That's correct.
Okay. How would they go about doing so?
That information will be posted on our webpage.
Okay, thank you. And I know the question was also raised about the MEA contract. And I believe that it's the stance of this board that we, we try not to comment on specific details of negotiations while they are ongoing. I think it's a smart approach for, for many reasons, but I will say that a subcommittee of the board has been meeting with MEA on a regular basis, probably since the beginning of this year. And we have been making slow and steady progress. And the, the closure of schools in March put a little bit of a hiccup in our process. But the, the teams are continuing to meet and work through contract negotiations as best we can. So that's about as much of a statement as we can give at this time, but I just wanted to let people know that contract negotiations are definitely happening. Does anyone else from the board have any comments or questions on the budget? All right, then I think.
Actually, sorry, I mute, couldn't find my mute button. The only question I had was last month, Mr. Regina mentioned some people retiring, not unexpectedly, but a little bit unexpectedly. I just was curious if there's any more people that we've heard about that.
We, to answer that question, we actually received an unofficial email today that we will be having one more MEA retirement. We do have an additional IA Mespa retirement on the board agenda this evening. We still have a couple that are asking, but we do have one that will likely be on the agenda next week.
And the only other comment I'll make to piggyback on something Mr. Winters made. You know, every district's different, every buildings are different, curriculum, et cetera. Mr. Winters mentioned full-time to part-time, and I do know we have some traveling teachers, but I know where I work, we have quite a few traveling teachers. So that's just something when we talk about efficiencies to look at. We're very good about keeping our class size at a, at an educationally appropriate number. At the elementary level, we have some guidelines. I would also suggest, you know, there are some classes that have to be smaller for certain reasons, whether they're a certain AP level and there's only so many kids. I understand that. And Mr. Strigini does a great job of, of keeping us posted on things like that at the high school. But I would also strongly suggest we look at some class size and some efficiency in some areas where maybe a teacher could do some traveling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any other, yes, Ms. Purdue?
I just have one comment, and I think something that's come up several times with these discussions and even at finance, it's been asked several times if we can get a detailed salary report. And I just want to know, is that something that we are going? detailed salary report. And I just want to know, is that something that we're going to see soon, and I mean sooner than later, as we have to adapt this budget and also make some decisions as far as things that we can do to maybe lessen some of the task burdens? Is this something that we're going to see soon?
You're asking for a detailed person-by-person budget, what their salaries are?
I think we've asked for something similar, just to see staffing-wise in the entire district and then also salary, just when we want to look at some of the efficiencies, when we're talking about running efficiencies at this school. I think several people have asked for it, and we still haven't seen, at least I haven't seen it, but I'm not on a finance committee, and I'm asking, is that something that we plan on, whether it's an executive session or not, is that something that we plan on bringing up?
I think what's important, I think what's important for you, Ms. Perdue, and the rest of the board to understand is that having a list of the budgeted staffing is not necessarily going to tell us anything related to efficiency. That, it's just going to tell you what the cost is and how we budget that cost particularly to represent what the cost is going to be for the budget. As Mr. Booker said numerous times last year, this year, and with every business manager that I've worked with, we budget the staff to the personnel costs for which we anticipate them being at. So for example, if it's an administrator, it's estimated as the presentation has so indicated, they take your current salary times a maximum of 3%, and then assuming that their benefits are those items which they currently are being, that are being utilized, and we, that's how we budget the individuals. So there actually may be budget changes between now and June because we are doing open enrollment, and if we, we know that that information or people do change their benefits in that period of time, it's possible that those changes would result in decreasing costs, and we would then reflect them as we present the final budget.
So if that request is not what's going to give us information on efficiency, then what kind of report do you have that will provide that information?
If the board is so inclined to have the conversation about efficiency and where there are concerns with efficient use of staff, we can certainly have those conversations. But as you may imagine, some of those conversations are going to be hypersensitive. They may actually include the identification of individuals whereby, you know, potentially conflicting with the rules under which an executive session is more inclined to address those matters. So if it is the interest of the board to have those types of conversations, I would work directly with the board president to schedule such a meeting, determine to the extent necessary what the board exactly is looking for, and I can provide that presentation. If the matter does not require an executive session, that would be a discussion in the public, and the board would then be presented with those matters. So my recommendation is, is if the, if members of the board feel that they are prepared and ready to address matters of staffing and/or efficiency in the Methacton schools, that they should contact the board president and suggest that an executive session be arranged for. Then the board president will work with me to make those arrangements, and then we will contact a solicitor to ensure that they do or do not meet the intent of the executive session rules.
There any other comments from the board before we move to a vote then? Okay, we're going to go through and do a roll call vote for this budget, starting with Ms. Cancro.
Yes.
Ms. Drummond?
Yes.
Ms. Hull?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Navarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes as well. So with a vote of 9-0, our preliminary budget has passed. And with that, we'll now move on to courtesy of the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to provide comments on matters that could become before the Board of Directors. We ask you to keep your comments to four minutes or less. We may choose to respond to matters at the conclusion of the courtesy of the floor, period. One moment here. Dr. Malik, you can go ahead and unmute.
I sound all right?
You're a little quiet.
How about now?
There you go.
Thanks. Speaking of efficiency, I think, if I remember correctly, that Dr. Zerby did an efficiency study with regards to teaching staff some time back and had determined that we had a excess of teachers. I think the number was up to, I think, 30 extra or too many teachers in the district. And I couple this with the fact that the last negotiation with the MEA seemed to be not very aggressive on their part, and they settled for some, I think, pretty low percentage increases. And they may actually realize that there are too many teachers in the district as well. So I think that's, you know, I think Dr. Zerby should present the public with the information he has indicating that we have too many teachers, how many, how many too many do we have, and what the cost savings would be if we scaled it back to where it's an appropriate number. So I think, you know, the board should have Dr. Zerby do that, and you may end up saving millions of dollars just from the economy scale. When I, when I look at what's going on with the budget and the current situation in the economy, I really do think that you have to consider delaying the Arrowhead project several years. I don't think you're going to hurt any kids by keeping them at Arrowhead right now, and the building's not going to fall apart. But until you can get some certainty regarding the virus, the economy, Peasers, teacher negotiations with the MEA, you're going to get a cost savings of $35 million plus interest by just delaying the project a couple of years. So you won't have to spend that money, and you know, any Peasers increase or anything else you're worried about becomes a non-issue. Mr. Earnshaw detailed the budget surpluses as good as anyone can, so I won't discuss them. But I don't believe that four straight years of multimillion-dollar budget surpluses are an accident or a mistake. You have two very smart people who are putting together those budgets, Mr. Bricker and Dr. Zerby, and I don't think they're making mistakes. And the reason I'm concerned is we're being overtaxed at this point. We've been overtaxed, you know, at least four years in a row, and our state ranking has dropped from 11 to 65th over the past four years. And if you look at the Planning Commission's valuation of median home sales in Worcester, it's down $43,000 for 2018-19, and the median home price in Worcester is down 10.7%. So the idea behind having a really good school district is to bolster property values, and that's not happening. So somebody needs to address why our property values are going down and why our ranking is going down. I think you can best do that when you have, don't have all this financial stress. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Next on my list, I have Mr. Earnshaw. And Mr. Earnshaw, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First, thank you to Mr. Wares for addressing a number of the questions I had regarding the budget. He mentioned the limitation of the nuisance tax. That is absolutely correct, but I think you also need to factor in the cost savings that those billing costs are no longer incurred. So the net is probably about $200,000 of your 2.3 million tax increase as a result of the loss of that revenue. I do hope that you're going to relook at the forecast. I know I've wrote an $8 million number, might not be that high. It'll likely be north of 3, but that's a very important to understand, and you need to take a look at those, well, I encourage you to look at those April year date expenses. And to get to Mr. Burger's forecast, how much in expenses would need to be incurred during the final two months of the fiscal year. And if I remember correctly, it was about a 50% increase of what was spent in April. My point on the collection rate was that I thought it was aggressive. I don't think this economic downturn is anything like 2008, 2009. So I think that's a risk in the budget that should be considered. And then finally, thanks to Ms. Perdue and Mr. Navarrett and others for asking for this salary schedule. It's something that I know has been requested over the past couple of years, and if you're making a claim of doing a bottoms-up budget, you should have a detailed list of every employee, their salary, their benefit costs, especially given that those costs are 69 and 1/4% of the budget. So without that information, I mean, I understand, I don't understand Dr. Zerby's point of why it's not going to tell you. It may not tell you about efficiencies. What it's going to tell you is where are the open positions and why are they still in the budget? If you look at the past couple of years, the surpluses have all come from salaries and benefits. So there's either an error, there's an intentional desire to do this, or some other reason. But to get to the bottom of it, you need that detailed list, and you're going to tie it out by building and tie it out to every account that is in the budget. That is imperative. So I encourage you to keep asking for this. You've got four weeks to do it, and if it's not readily available, a bottoms-up budget is not being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. So I know that we did require everyone to pre-register, but I do see that Mr. Bickelman is raising his hand, and I don't have him on the list of pre-registered speakers. But Mr. Bickelman, I know you are a regular commenter during courtesy of the floor, so gonna allow you in. Don't say I never did anything nice for you. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hey, I really appreciate that. If I would have known that, I would have raised my hand during board action. What I want to talk about is the staffing. What the board needs, since 70% of the budget is set staffing and personnel, here's what you need, board. You need a staffing chart by position, by building, showing the people that are funded in the budget, not people that are set aside, okay? You want to match this chart up by position, by building, to the amount of money that's in the budget. That chart that has, you know, the Director of Technology in it and things like that, you took the money out of the budget, you got to take the position out of the chart. But you need a staffing chart by position, by building. You know why? Because you're going to see things like, we have six guidance counselors at the high school, and enrollment's gone down over the years. You're going to see things like that. You're going to see the number of social studies teachers, science teachers, all the different categories, and you're going to start to do the math according to the kids, all right? And you're going to wonder why you have that many full-time positions there. As an example, when I worked at Colonial School District, somebody saw that we had seven phys ed teachers in the high school, seven, when mostly everybody around the area didn't have seven. But you know what happened? And this is government for you. Here's what happens. The person that would have gotten furloughed was the newly hired football coach, okay? So what happens is, all of a sudden, we need a dean of students at the high school, okay? So one of the phys ed, one of the phys ed teachers becomes the dean of students out of nowhere. So you retain your football coach. That's what goes on. But you need these positions by category, by building, and you'll start to do the math, and you'll see the inefficiencies. Anybody that's on that chart that doesn't have money hooked up to it shouldn't be on the chart. Believe me, they shouldn't be on the chart. You might want to footnote it or whatever, but they shouldn't be on the chart. You have an operational surplus that's going to be $3 million for the 1920 school year. You had 2.9 million in 1819, and you rolled 1.2 million over to a capital reserve account. The general fund currently has $7.5 million of cash surplus sitting on it. You're sitting on it, all right? Now you're going to have another $3 million roll in there, and you're thinking of ways to restrict it. That money should go back to the taxpayers because it wasn't needed in the year that they were taxed, the 1920 school year. That needs to come back to the taxpayers because you are definitely overtaxing. Should be a 0% tax increase, okay? That's what should happen. There's no way. You got to concentrate on this staff. And believe me, I work with the personnel system, the negotiating system. There are pushes of buttons to get this stuff. You can roll everybody in the Methacton Teachers Association with the push of a button, and their salary will be lined up to a matrix, and each one of their names will be dropped into an account, okay, where you can see everybody's name. It's a push-button system, all right? You can get all those names, they run against the matrix, and they get dropped into your account categories. That's what your system does now, your Carbon Lehigh system. It's a push of a button, and it automatically takes the benefits with it, the FICA, the retirement, everything. It all goes in there, and you can see a list of that by a push of a button. That's what happens in your system. It's easy to get to the data. It's easy to budget. Personnel, 70% of the budget, that's where your focus needs to be. You need to use your system. It exists. Every name gets rolled into a matrix and into the account codes.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Thank you. And now, Mr. Andrews.
I've been unmuted. Thank you. Data-driven analyses. Here I am, again pushing for higher-quality education, efficiency, and saving $50 million by a return to K-5 and 6 to 8 schools. That's instead of replacing an old, small Arrowhead school and the lengthy troubles of construction noise and crowding. Recently, I posted to Living in Lower Providence on Facebook to alert the public of the plan to use single bus runs for both Skyview and Arkola and one set of start and end times for both schools. One outcome was a query of me by a resident stating, "The people of Arrowhead deserve at least an updated school. We watched everyone around us get improvements, make me feel like we weren't valued, yet we paid all the same taxes." I responded, and here I condense, "I agree that the Arrowhead community deserves an updated school. Option C gives you a better K-5 school at the nearby Skyview location. That school and the Arkola school fix larger issues that benefit the entire Methacton community. Option C gains fixing overdue repairs faster across the district, as well as the other items mentioned at the start of this speech." Also regarding education quality, option C is the one way to improve our high school rank in Pennsylvania. There are 14 high schools in southeast Pennsylvania that have option C setups. Their average rank is 30, while we are at 65, well below the rank of 11 for students that came through before Skyview opened. These are data-driven facts. Help us to get a change to option C." Another comment stated, "This district is so screwed up, it's pathetic." Moving on to another topic, the County Planning Commission recently posted its annual median housing prices report for last year. It shows that Worcester home sale prices dropped 7% over the last four years while surrounding- It shows that Worcester home sales prices dropped 7% over the last four years, while surrounding towns posted rises of 11 to 42%. Four years is a period of care dominance of this board. Time for you to wake up and deliver better education and control property increases to stop this harm to homeowners. Seems some will be seeking reassessments downward. Again, option C is the way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. And that concludes our courtesy of the floor, period. Any comments from the board? Okay, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Ms. Reese, Mr. McGinnis, all right, our meeting is adjourned and we will just momentarily be starting our next meeting.
Ms. Zerby, I'm going to, I'm going to stop the recording and then start another recording for the next meeting, okay?
Okay.